Y rating in lieu of a layoff for a classified manager.
Thank you very much.
Nothing else.
Thank you, Trustee Prendergast. Now we'll have the invocation led by Trustee Witt, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Trustee Wright.
Members of this meeting and visitors, bow your heads as we ask for blessings and guidance. We give thanks for the success of our students, especially our 2018 graduates. As we look back on this academic year, it has brought challenges and opportunities. There have been many changes. Yes, change can be difficult, yet very constructive. Therefore, we ask you to give us the insight and calm, to look for the good, and focus on the success of our students as we proudly support our district and our community.
Please follow me.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two requests for public comments. We have Nancy Montgomery and Camille DiSopo. Did I pronounce that correctly? So Nancy, you want to come forward, and then Camille, you want to get ready to go. And you two, I think, are familiar. So we asked everyone to speak for a maximum or up to two minutes. You can always speak less. And the microphone is yours.
Good evening. I just wanted to come and do a little bragging. So Irvine Valley College, two items I wanted to address with you. We were the forerunners, the people that were innovative and pressing forward and getting these Veteran Resource Centers funded from the state. So for two years, we took veterans up there. Over 500 veterans went up there. Our president, Dr. Glenn Rockmore, and trustee James Wright went with us our last year there. But I wanted to just kind of bring that up because we were funded $10 million last year, and we just received last month our first checks. And that's all of it. There was 108 colleges that applied for the money and got that. So I'm very proud of that, and I think Irvine Valley College should be, because we were kind of the lead on that and pushed it forward. The second item I wanted to brag about is that we were also awarded the Innovation Award for $2 million. And I just got notification of that last week, so I'm very excited about that. And again, that's to build infrastructure and programs, collect data, and do a baseline complete data assessment of what our veterans are and their needs are in the state, figure it out, and then start doing trainings and addressing those needs and social support that they need to acclimate and become successful in college. So just those two items. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Camille DiSopo, and next month I will complete my 14th year as a part-time counselor at Saddleback College. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and provide the full range of academic, personal, and career counseling to our students. Most of you have an idea of the type of high school student who comes to community college. They're often the 18-year-old recent graduate who didn't get into the university they chose, who don't or who don't really want to go to college but their parents say they have to. Or maybe they have their heart set on the expensive university, so they're attending community college and will transfer to the university. Community college students, however, are not only the 18-year-old recent high school graduates. Our student is also the 46-year-old empty nester who always wanted a college, always wanted a college degree and now sees her opportunity. Our student is also the honored student who finds out she's pregnant and hasn't attended classes for three weeks and doesn't know whether to drop her classes or to risk failing. And our student is also the biology student intent on going to medical school. He's taking 19 units and working 35 hours a week, and because of that, he's not able to get the grades he needs to get to medical school. What is he to do? Counseling our students is complex because they are more than just their major. Many do not even have an academic goal, and if they do today, they may have a different goal next semester. Some students are clear about their goal, but required courses, required GPAs, and required timeframes may be different next year than they are now. One student I saw actually last week was rejected by Cal State Fullerton, the only university he applied to, because his GPA wasn't high enough. If he had applied for transfer two years ago, he would have had no problem. He didn't know the rules had changed. Community college students need counselors with a full range of counseling skills as well as academic advising skills. They don't need a counselor to meet with them once and give them a shopping list of courses to take and tell them to come back if they run into a snag. No, our students need counselors who can guide and advise them to develop and use the skills they need to be successful. I'm proud to be part of our team at Saddleback College. We work together to do just that. We provide our students with the information and the skills they need to be successful. And when they have the information and the skills they need, retention increases, completion increases, and success is the result. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And any other requests for public comments? Seeing none, we'll now move on to board reports. And I'd like to turn to my right and ask Trustee Lang to kick things off.
Although I hope I'm not jinxing the anticipated approval of the item on our agenda for today, I did want to offer my excitement for and support to Kathleen Burke, our hopefully newest chancellor of the district. I very much welcome the leadership and energy that I expect she will bring to the South Orange County Community College District in this unique period of time in our district's history. I believe we are fortunate to have a person of Ms. Burke's experience and integrity to help our district achieve its great potential and that she is equally fortunate to have this opportunity to work with an organization that is blessed with so much talent and resources. I also want to extend my great appreciation to interim chancellor Tom Fallow for the wonderful job he's done in leading our district through what I consider to have been a very challenging period of time. Interim Chancellor Fallow has paved the way with the assistance of a terrific district leadership team to help put into place the ability of his successor to really hit the ground running. Thanks also to acting Saddleback College President Jim Busey for stepping in to lead the college on very short notice to offer a steady hand at the helm until a permanent president for the college can be hired. Couple of other items. The IVC Idea Building groundbreaking at ATAP was very exciting. I really enjoyed this event and the innovative design and functionality of the space, the exciting partnerships that we are already creating, and all those who joined us in helping to celebrate this great milestone for our district. Shout-outs also go to the following. IVC volleyball coach Tom Pestalaci for receiving the 2018 Coaching Achievement Award, the state championship IVC Speech and Debate Team, all those involved in helping Saddleback College having 23 career education programs, achieving strong workforce program stars from the state chancellor's office, and all the district and college individuals who were honored by their peers as employees, professors, and assistant professors of the year. Congratulations to one and all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
On April 10th, I attended the IVC Board of Governors Foundation meeting. The Foundation Awards Dinner celebrating excellence grossed 118,000. The IVC Scholarship Award Ceremony will be Wednesday, May 16th, at 8:00 a.m. for continental breakfast and 9:00 for the scholarship ceremony. On April 18th, Wednesday, I attended the ribbon cutting for the dedication of the Idea Building at ATAP. After the ribbon cutting, Alyssa Oransky came and got me and took me to the new Chris L. Lee Testing Center to meet Lee's wonderful parents. What a wonderful experience that was. They're just wonderful people. I was so impressed with the new state-of-the-art Lee Testing Center that I returned to the campus Friday, the 20th, to see the testing center again. I was introduced to Nick Farrell, who gave me a very interesting and thorough two-hour tour of the facility. The places I visited included the Lee Testing Center, the electronics lab, the robotics facility, the computer numerical control lab, and the 3D printing lab. I met and talked to several students who were working on robotics projects and briefly visited a class where introductory engineering was being taught. I was very impressed with the quality and enthusiasm of both the staff and the students. Mr. Nick Farrell was a fine tour guide, and from my observation was excellent rapport with the students. The highlights. I learned about several programs leading to the associate degree certificate achievements and certificates of proficiency. These include electronic technology, design, model making, rapid prototyping, engineering, and drafting, and laser technology, protonics. I learned that these programs are designed to lead to well-paying jobs in established and emerging industries in our area. In some cases, immediately on completing the programs, and others to transfer to four-year institutions. I learned that these programs are aimed at helping fulfill a community need and at helping students become productive members of society. Students should be encouraged to explore these programs. This applies to all student groups, from recent high school graduates to older students retaining for greater employment opportunities and to students re-entering the job market after periods of absence. Several questions came to mind as I toured ATAP. How is the district interfacing with the local employers to ensure that the curriculum matches the needs and makes the graduates employable? How can ATAP programs be tailored to assume that graduates have the skills and knowledge that makes them more employable than those receiving only on-the-job training for the employers? How does the counseling staff assist students in finding the right curriculum to meet their needs and goals, especially the STEM science areas? All counselors, IVC, and Saddleback should take a tour of the ATAP New Idea Building with Nick Farrell. This should be mandatory. What a fabulous facility we now have. The equipment there is fantastic. We are so lucky to have Nick Farrell. He is a real gem for ATAP. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you about my fabulous experience just dropping in on Friday after the ribbon cutting. When I was there for the ribbon cutting, I saw that there were classes and sessions, so I thought, maybe Friday it would be open, and it was. And I had the most wonderful two-hour tour. And I'd like everybody on the board to take the same tour. They will be amazed at the gem that we have.
Well, if it's mandatory, is everyone going to have a two-hour tour?
If we can get together with Nick. If we can get together with Nick, it would be, it was wonderful.
You got the red carpet treatment. Very good. Thank you. I'm going to pass on my report and invoke personal privilege to go at the end. Trustee Milch.
Okay, I'll go next. I attended many wonderful events for our students during this month, and I look forward to the numerous celebrations that we're going to have prior to our two commencements very shortly. Some of the events I attended are our incredible Spanish professor Carmen Mara had a Sephardic Passover seder for the students with all the traditional foods, followed by a Persian banquet for all of the students. Then the dedication of the Idea Building at the IVC's High Tech Classroom Building at ATAP. And as trustee Jay said, the engineering students showed us their wonderful apparatus, the robots, and of course, I loved all that. Then I attended One Book One College at Saddleback College, and the whole college read the book Undocumented, which is about a Dominican Republic student who came to this country when he was four years old and accomplished an Ivy League education and is now teaching at Princeton. And that was attended by many students with many really excellent questions from the students. Also, the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force continues to discuss and influence new legislation which will affect all of the four community colleges in Orange County. That's why myself and three other trustees from the three other community college districts in Orange County founded the task force so many years ago. Of great interest now to the task force are the new funding formula coming down the pike for the community colleges and the online college initiative. Both of these have been championed by the governor. So we've been monitoring these proposals as we need to be, and our next task force meeting is on May 10th at 2:00 p.m. at Coast Community College. And come if you have additional ideas or you have additional strategies on how to deal with these initiatives. Okay, just join me for a few of the upcoming meetings that aren't on our upcoming trustee events calendar. One is the Saddleback College Biology Symposium, which will be this Friday at 4:00 p.m. at Saddleback College. This is created by our two biology professors, Abby Surulnuk and Marcelo Pares. Their honor students, Pares, their honor students will present their students' original research. I'm a biology professor, and I learned some new things last year from these honor students' presentations, and everyone's invited. The presentations were wonderful. And also faculty editor Virginia Shank of Irvine Valley College is the editor of the EER Literary Journal and would like to invite everyone, including me, to attend the celebration of the release of the 22nd edition of the EER, which features work from all of the IVC community and from artists and writers far away as Pakistan, Brazil, and Poland. So please enjoy, join us on 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 16th, the Liberal Arts Building for food, drinks, and a gallery of new art and reading and fiction and poetry. I'll be doing one of the readings, as I'm infamous for having read a few poems at a former EER celebration in a most sinister and fun fashion. Oh, our professors offer a myriad of incredible opportunities for our students, and we thank them. We also thank acting chancellor Tom Fallow, and today's his very last day. He really wanted to just slip quietly away into the night, but he's been driving down from Torrance and had only been able to work on an abbreviated schedule, but he's been wonderful, and he's made all the difference, and we sincerely thank him for our service. And we look forward to seeing all of you at the commencement. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, trustee Prendergast.
So I too would like to say thank you to interim chancellor Tom Fallow. It's been very enlightening, some of the things that we have been able to deal with, and we really appreciate your leadership and what you've helped do to this district. I did attend the Idea Building ribbon cutting, though apparently from all the pictures you wouldn't know I was there because none of the photographers realized I was being hidden in the back, but I was there.
You were?
Yes, I was. So that's all I have to report since, I mean, I guess I could just sit here for another four minutes and...
We could have photobomb you. I mean...
I'm done.
Trustee Wright.
Thank you. Again, let me express my appreciation to our interim chancellor, Tom Fallow. He's done a wonderful job for us, and we certainly will miss him. I want to let you know that most of the trustees, including myself, attended four special board meetings this last, this month. There were, one was on the 9th of April, one was on the 10th of April, the 17th of April, and the 18th of April. I also attended the Idea Building, which is the integrated design, engineering, and automotive building at ATAP. Wonderful building. I enjoyed the ribbon cutting ceremony and also touring the building. I wanted to let you know that I attended a very special meeting this week, or this last week, last Thursday. It was the vets luncheon in partnership with the Orange County Community Foundation, the Third Annual Orange County Real Estate Luncheon. It will benefit the health, education, and employee of Orange County veterans. Our veterans are really talented people, and they need a lot of help. Unfortunately, we have about 20 veterans a day that commit suicide. So this program is designed to try to find the veterans that are in Orange County and try to help them. I know both of our colleges, Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, have vet center. They're very, they're very good veteran centers. In fact, they're very outstanding. Nancy McGormery's in charge of the one at IVC, and Terrence Nelson is also at Saddleback, and they've done a wonderful job. And I certainly enjoyed that meeting. I might point out, there were about 630 people there, and as a result of being there, tables had to be bought. There was $730,000 was raised to help veterans in Orange County. I also wanted to thank Glenn Rockmore for a number of things that he has done this last month. The one thing that I thought was wonderful was the pathway for students from high school to go to Saddle, or go to IVC and then go to UCI in the engineering program, sort of what we call a K through 16 pathways. I also wanted to thank and congratulate Nancy McGormery on that innovative grant of $2 million. That's a real great event. And finally, I just wanted to thank Mark Blatham. He had a report that he sent out talking about part-time instructors and some of the problems that they have, and I certainly enjoyed that, the five areas that he had here. In fact, I made myself some notes that part-time faculty members, some of the concerns that they have are lack of sufficient affordability healthcare, seniority rehiring rights, parity pay, lack of safety and support, maternity and family leave, and then student debt. So I appreciate reading about some of the, some of the problems that part-time faculty go through. In fact, I have taught myself, when I was on active duty in the military, I taught in the evenings many times at community colleges and certainly enjoyed it. And I also wanted to thank both of the presidents, Jim Bussi and also Glenn again for their outstanding reports.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, and especially those in the back. I appreciate that you came tonight. I'm going to be short because of lack, because of time. We started a little late. I also attended the ribbon cutting, and a lot happened that morning. It was very, it was, it was a memorial event for me. It really was. And I wanted to thank President Rockmore and your team. You did a splendid job of putting that together. I mean, it was exciting. I want all of you, and I hope you consider, and I hope you go to the gala, which will be this, this coming Saturday.
A week from?
A week from Saturday.
Saturday.
No, the 12th. Yes, a week from Saturday. I'm hoping that we will show our support, because what's the gala all about? It is about our students. And it's a little expensive movie ticket or a little expensive dinner ticket, but what is it about? It's about our students. So I'm hoping that all of you will consider attending, especially those who are employed in this college. Last but not least, I really want to extend my appreciation to chancellor Fallow's. You, in your short time, have truly made a difference in the landscape of this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll close, I guess, the board reports. I agree on the last point, that I hope everyone is able to attend the Saddleback College Foundation Gala. I was at the IVC Foundation Gala, and I think we proud to support that and will be proud to support the Saddleback College Foundation Gala, and I see Winnie's in the, in the back. So we're going to be there to support you. The, a lot has been said about the IVC Idea Building ribbon cutting, and I don't have much to add other than that the event itself was well-run, well-attended. Nice to see Mayor Al Murray there and have some photo opportunities with him. I know we've, they've become great partners of ours. But most importantly, the prospect of ATAP and the Idea Building. And I think that that's what excites us. I think that's what should excite everyone in the district. It was a great day for IVC, but there are a lot of expectations going forward. And I'm really confident that you, and I see Chris is here as well, and I know you've been involved with what's happening there at the Idea Building, and I assume you'll, I know you'll keep making progress. And I think I'll, I'll take that two-hour tour at some point, take a rain check. So the third thing is, and trustee Lang alluded to it, we're on the cusp of bringing in a new chancellor. And, you know, it's been a long process. Some of you were involved in that on committees and recommendations up to us, and we do our part as a board, and I, I can just tell you that we've worked as conscientiously as I think we can. I think the position of chancellor is obviously invaluable to the district. It sets the tone, and I think what I look for, and I think most of the board looks for, is someone with integrity, someone that has leadership, someone that has good judgment, and someone that's willing to be transparent. And I think that that's what, that's what I look for. That's our expectation coming in. I always assume it's going to work out, and I have no reason to believe it will not. We're likely to bring in someone, as trustee Lang alluded to it, with significant amount of experience, and the expectation is that she's going to be a great chancellor, and I have every reason to believe that. And then lastly, Tom, you know, my only regret is that we had you longer and more often. And it was, I was involved in the initial outreach to you to get you to, cajole you into this position. I knew we had the right person right, right off the bat, and, you know, you're a tremendous leader, and I see why you were successful at your previous job, and I see why you were successful coming in. Tom was not full-time for us, but it sure seemed like it. And he exercised tremendous judgment, made a lot of tough decisions. A lot of stuff gets up to the chancellor level. Yes, chancellors are generally well-compensated, but they're not all competent, and Tom certainly was. And I think you've put our district in a really good position going forward and laid the groundwork for continuous improvement in this district, at the district level, but also in the relationships between the district and the colleges, and for that, we thank you. And on that note, I'd like to ask the board members to step up for a quick photo opportunity and, and just a, just a card, Tom. We're just going to bring you a card of our thanks. So, thank you very much.
So, on that note, I think I'll turn it over. No, I'm going to do your, well, okay, we'll do your report now. Student trustee Larson.
That's a hard report to follow up, but I do want to express my gratitude to the interim chancellor, Fallow. You did wonderful things during your time here and positioned our district for a bright future. Having been a student here, this is going to be my ninth year. I've noticed that this board has been a very competent one and does make very wise decisions, and going forward, I expect the same in the process for the next chancellor. Having said that, I do look forward to attending the commencement ceremonies at both colleges. It's a wonderful celebration for the students, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Fallow.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to express my appreciation to the board and all that I, all the other folks that I've worked with in this brief time in the district. It's been far more fun for me than it has been for you in some senses, but I'm confident that you serve your community and your students wonderfully well. And my underbet is eight o'clock tonight. Thank you all.
You're ambitious. Not one of us made our time on our board reports, oh, except for TJ. All right. College presidents' reports.
Thank you especially for the opportunity to serve Saddleback College, its faculty, staff, and students as interim president. I look forward to working with everyone. Everybody's been great so far, and it's an excellent institution, and I'm honored to be associated with it. My written report contained a summary of recognitions and accolades for several programs and administrators. A standout to me was the recognition gained from the state chancellor's office with the awarding of 23 strong workforce stars to our career education programs. The stars are presented for outstanding post-college outcomes in employment, earnings gains, and regional living wages. And that, in that arena is what we're all about. So that, that's outstanding. Second, our students in the honors program continue to impress. After we submitted the written report, we learned that on April 14th, three of our students were recognized by Alpha Gamma Sigma, the Academic Honor Society and Service Organization of the California Community Colleges. Laura Chiucci, Hannah Stone, and Haruka Tabuchi were awarded Outstanding Service and Academic Excellence scholarships totaling $2,800. As trustee Witt has already noted, May 12th is our foundation's annual gala. I look forward to seeing you all there. The foundation team is assured will be, will be a great time for all. And lastly, I'd just like to say thanks to Tom Fallow too. I've known Tom for, I won't say how long. And we go back a ways, and it's been a real pleasure for me to actually get to work with him. When you know somebody, but you've never worked together really, it's a whole different thing, and he's been an outstanding leader for your district. And I wish you the very best going forward, Tom.
Thank you.
I would like to thank everyone for your comments tonight. Deeply appreciated. And also know that the ribbon cutting at the idea building was a huge team effort. That building was not what you saw just days before then, and it was both the IVC teams as well as the district team that pulled together to, to really make that happen. And I'm just so proud, I've not seen in my 25 years that sort of camaraderie and dedication. So kudos go out to them. The innovation grant, I'd like to let you know that those are very difficult to get. And I appreciate the work of Nancy Montgomery and her staff in, in pulling that together, particularly for our student veterans. And so it, it's a nice addition to her work at the state level that has led to funding for these veteran centers that didn't have that before, and because of her work, now they do. And she's working hard to make that a continuing grant as well because that was a one-time fund. The innovation grant is going to go a long way to, to help three colleges as well as IVC. Working with Jim Weiss, it's a pleasure to have him next to me. We've worked together in a couple of different capacities so far, and that makes us ideal. We know each other pretty well now, and, and we're going to hum along with that. So I'm going to echo Jim a little bit in regard to Tom Fallow. I've also known him for a very long time. We did not have the opportunity to work together, but I primarily knew him through his reputation and his engagement and leadership in a number of community college organizations that we all attend. He had an incredible, still has an incredible reputation among all of the CEOs in the state. And so now I got the opportunity to work for him and work with him, and I have to say, Tom, you're a gentleman and a leader, and I've learned a lot from you. Appreciate all you've done.
Thank you. Next up, our associated student government. So I think we'll start with IVC.
Good evening, everyone. I also want to echo the same comments around the room about interim chancellor Fallow. I just want to say thank you so much for the work you've put in for the district. It, it, it means a lot seeing like you work so hard. So for, for my report, I have two items, I have, or I have two items to highlight from my written report. One is the RASG of IVC Spring Training. So for the incoming officers for the 2018, 2019 school year, we've been having multiple training sessions throughout the whole month of April. So we're trying, we've, we've been teaching them different procedures, culture competency, and team building in preparation for the next academic school year. And my second item is that ASG of IVC has also hosted the First Annual Teacher of the Year nomination reception that happened last Thursday on April 26th. It was a wonderful event. This event was to celebrate this, the, this year's nominees who are nomi, or this year's teacher of the year nominees who are nominated by multiple stu, various students throughout the campus. And so it was a, it was a wonderful, wonderful event, and we hope to continue more like it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we have a new face from Saddleback College.
Yes. Good evening, board members. My name is Perry Mead. I'm the president-elect of student government for Saddleback College, and I'm filling in for her.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I'm filling in for Erica tonight because she is the keynote speaker at the dean's list reception going on right now at Saddleback. So that was pretty cool. And for the report, last month, on March 14th, the associate student government at Saddleback, we organized a student walkout in remembrance of the 17 lives that were lost in the Parkland shooting. So it was 17 minutes out in the quad. Erica gave a, presented like a speaking platform, talking about what the event was about, and then we had chairs set up, 17 chairs with descriptions and bios of each student and person that lost their life in the shooting. And we continue to have civic engagement, community engagement like this for going forward for this semester and then next year as well. So on top of that, also this past month, we had a sexual assault awareness event in which we had an SSC 212, and we had a panel, and it was talking about what is Title IX and what the different resources are on campus and how you can deal with people that you know, like whether it's fellow students or family members that have dealt with sexual assault. And then also tomorrow, in continuance of these events, we are having a candidate forum here at Saddleback College that we have collaborated with the Saddleback Pre-Law Society, and there will be congressional candidates, the current district attorney of Orange County, Tony Recockes, and then a candidate for OC sheriff. That is from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM tomorrow in SM 313.
Who's, is that your report?
Yes.
Do you know which congressional candidates are coming?
Yes. Dave Mann and Katie Porter from the 45th District, Mike Levin and Doug Applegate are coming, and then Tony Recockes for district attorney, Todd Spitzer from the OC Board Supervisors running for district attorney, and then Duke Nguyen who's running for OC sheriff.
That's tomorrow at noon to two?
Yes.
What's the room number again?
SM 313.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Great. Okay. Very good. I see that we have no discussion items. Maybe that's why you're calling for the eight o'clock conclusion. We'll move on to the consent calendar, and I am going to poll 5.2. Any other polls? 5.12?
I'd like to pull mostly just for question 5.5 and 5.10 and 5.12 and 5.17.
Any other polls? All right. Do I have a motion? By, back to the old ways. There's a motion from trustee J and a second from trustee Lang to approve the balance of the items that have not been polled. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. I think we're missing, oh, the balance of the items are approved by unanimous trustee yes vote. All right. Let's go to, since you have the lowest item numerically, trustee Witt, why don't you take all of your items first? So go, let, it just be easier, I think?
Yes, that's fine.
Perhaps? So you want to start out with 5.5?
Yes. My comment here is that I've noticed, and Randy might as well start walking. I've noticed here that in many of the bids that we get, we only have one. And I, I just need to, I need to know why. Okay? Is it that we're not publicizing this soon enough, or is it that that bid was really too low, that job wasn't grandiose? I really want to know why.
So we are following all the public contract code requirements as far as the way that we advertise and we're marketing. We put an advertisement in the register. We feel like we're doing everything, we're doing everything we've always done relative to our projects. The difference right now is that there are billions of dollars of construction on the streets in Los Angeles, in Long Beach, here in South Orange County. Contractors are so busy, it's a challenge to get their, gain their interest in our projects. And this is a very small project, and it's very specific. It's a sidewalk project with handrail. And so it would attract only a very small arena of contractors. That would explain this particular one. But in general, we are absolutely seeing fewer responses to our construction bids.
Can I just, trustee Witt, do you mind if I ask a question?
Yeah.
If you could just quickly summarize, where do we advertise? I mentioned, you mentioned the register, but where else? BidSync and, you know, are there other platforms where we advertise our, our contract opportunities?
Many of those third-party systems will look to our website and advertise on our behalf without our real awareness that they're doing it. We do as well have the bids advertised on our website, like I said, so people come to our website and look there as well.
Isn't BidSync considered like the primary platform for public agency contracts?
I'm, I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't, maybe capital's different? Well, maybe we can talk offline a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd be happy to learn something more about that.
Any other questions, trustee Witt?
No.
It's a motion from trustee, oh, well, we can.
I just want to clarify what I'm voting on because what I'm reading is, is they're doing horizontal drilling.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There's another one later that's also a one bid on the ramp, and I was thinking it.
This looks a little more involved than a sidewalk.
In this case, it's also a very specific type of work. Horizontal drilling is very.
Yeah, that's what I assumed, but I just want to make sure that I wasn't confused.
Sorry, thank you for that correction. And we're probably going to be talking about the other one in just a minute.
Is that mic on? Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Trustee Lang.
As long as we've got this item, as long as we've got this item up, I, I wasn't exactly sure what was involved with this project either. So can you describe this one to us a little bit?
Yes, this is really exciting, actually. It's a sustainability project where we're going to be using non-potable water to flush the toilets, so we're not using our potable water. And this project will bring that final, when we built the liberal arts building over at IVC, we included all the necessary piping and valves that separate the potable from the non-potable. These toilets have been flushing on potable water since we built the building, and we have a last connection that we need to make with the non-potable water, and we'll be flushing our toilets with non-potable water over there.
All right. Thank you for that.
Well, I'm glad I brought that up.
That's an exciting project for me.
Water efficiency is all very important. All right. We've, we've got a motion from trustee Wright, second trustee Lang to approve 5.5. Let's go ahead and vote. Item is moved by unanimous trustee yes vote, 5.10. Trustee Witt.
Yes, this isn't a question. This is a true comment, and I was very pleased to see this, that you have, I've never seen it before, twice now in our packet. We had an evaluation category. I'd never seen how you do the evaluations, and I wanted to applaud you for putting this together because I feel that this is very, very fair to all the entities that apply. So I just wanted to say hats off to you.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, let's move on.
That was really a kind note. All right. So any, we have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee J. Any other comments, questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Item carries through by a unanimous trustee yes vote, 5.12. Trustee Witt.
Okay, Randy, you know how thirsty I am. I haven't, I just had a really hard time, and I, I know we had problems with water, we had problems with electricity, but I had a real problem with $420,000 for the McCarthy Construction Company that charged us because we didn't have electricity for, what was it, three months, four months? I thought that was very steep.
It's established on a liquidated damage amount of money that is, it's established before we ever enter into contract. And so we identify what we believe those costs will be per day, and those costs then extend across any kind of a delay. So we considered the daily rate to be a fair rate, and really the bigger issue was the
So we're paying for time?
We're paying for the personnel, for McCarthy personnel to be on-site for a longer period of time than we originally contracted them for. So there are three people. There's the, the project manager, the superintendent, and the field engineer that will be there, had been there on this site for the timeframe that we were resolving these issues with the various utilities. I see that it, I think this one reads Southern California Edison Delay. And the, the permanent, not having the permanent power available at the campus prevented then the commissioning of things like HVAC or being able to test the elevator. Those kinds of things couldn't happen until after that permanent power electricity was in. So in addition to the timeframe that they were on-site longer, they also had a lot of tasks that they needed to, to address before we could occupy the building.
Well, then I guess that Honda generator did not work.
Oh, the generator worked, but we're, it's not, by code, we can't test an elevator. We can't commission our HVAC equipment.
By code, okay. By code. All right. So there's nothing we can do that's, that's a set standard across the board when something like that happens in all contracts?
In this case, no. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yeah, my, my question was a little bit different, and that is, do we have any recourse against, in this case, Southern California Edison?
Yes, I thought about that.
For the, you know, for the delays that they caused, that caused us to incur additional contractor costs?
There's, there's no recourse for the public utility. Unfortunately, there is no recourse.
Not sure about that. Trustee Wright.
I had the same question, but why, why, why wasn't South Edison there? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they come?
They were there, and I think that Anne Marie might have a better explanation for you relative to the specifics as she was working with Mary Opel on this issue. Right, so the, the delay with Edison was really due to having to put the conduit in for the site. So we were waiting on the infrastructure project, and both the gas lines and the electrical lines are in the same trenching. So Edison wouldn't come out until the gas company finished. The gas company was delayed about three to four weeks due to the fires, and so there was one delayed there. And then once the gas company finished, Edison discovered that there was an old transformer within the line, and they decided that that transformer needed to be removed before they would pull the lines for the building. Having to remove that transformer delayed the issue even more because then Edison had to bring out their civil, draw up plans and specs, get equipment purchased, and it just kind of exasperated the delays in waiting for Edison. You know, unfortunately, we're kind of at the whim of the utility companies, and we don't have a lot of pull with them. You know, as strong and as hard as we were working with them to try to escalate the timeframe, it wasn't really until January 10th that we finally got Edison to commit to the dates of when they were going to put in both the power and pull the line.
Yeah, okay. Trust, trustee Prendergast.
I mean, I, I understand the
I mean, I, I understand the, the heartburn over this amount of money, and it is a lot of money, but at the same time, it, having worked in construction, if you're stuck on a site, you're stuck on a site, and you can't take another job somewhere else. You're, you're losing money out, out of your control, so that's why they put that in the contract. It's not their fault. Yeah, and unfortunately, the, the gas line, I think, sounds like it was a big air hiccup, but finding the transformer is probably a good thing so that we don't lose power in the building. So, I don't know, as long as it means our building works and the way it's supposed to, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Well, I would just say that, I think I said this at a previous meeting, yes, the gas company and Edison are, are monopolies. We're at their beck and end call. There's very little we can do, but there, but there, there are, I think we have more pull than you think. So, going forward, we can, we can discuss ways to engage the, the public utilities a little more aggressively, maybe. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And this other comment on this, and I was going to say something, not, not to you, Brandy, this probably shouldn't have been on the consent calendar, this item. I would have put it under a general action item. It clearly wasn't close to being consent. So, this kind of item in the future, I would, would rather appear on the general action item. Okay? Thank you. All right. So, let's go ahead and, is, oh, is there a motion to, to move the item? It's a motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Lang. I don't think we have any other questions, so let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote. All right. And, sorry, keep, we're good. Student advisory yes vote. Apologize for that. All right, 5.17. Trustee Whit?
Okay, this has to do with the purchase order and checks. I'd like to commend the person who wrote the February 8th and March 6th because I think we asked for this type of arrangement from the higher cost to the lesser cost, and this was much easier to read than in March. So I'd just like to ask if this could be done like this in the future. And in looking at all of these items, you know, obviously, we picked the ones that are six digits or, but I picked one that was less, and that was funds for postage for District Saddleback College in IVC. And I just thought that was an overwhelming amount of money for postage. I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but I think all of us need to look what we do, meaning if it's at the copier, or if it's with postage, or if it's with using paper. I really believe that we can tighten our budget. And maybe I'm wrong, but $30,000 is a lot of money for postage for one month. So, it's okay if you don't mail me anything anymore. You can email it to me, or give me a mailbox, and I'll come and pick it up. I think the board already knows that I've already said this, that if you, one time, one month, I checked to see how much postage I received, so I multiplied that times seven. And then I thought it was like $89. And I thought, wouldn't it have been nice to give a gas card or a food card to one of our homeless students? If we just started at a little bit at a time, you may think I'm silly, but I don't think I am. We have to start somewhere. So if we can look at all of these items, and if you are a dean or a director, whatever, see if you can tighten up your budget. I really believe we can do that. And afterwards, somebody can tell me why it's $30,000 for a month.
Why don't you just ask, was there, and, sorry, if I'm, I'm jumping in on you a lot, but is, was it an unusual spike this month?
So this isn't a one month, so if you're looking at PO 185338, the Pitney Bowes Reserve Account for $30,000, that's to replenish the account so that everyone can continue to use postage. So it could cover two, three, four months. This was just the check to replenish, replenish the postage meter.
Okay, thank you. I just saw that they were by the month, so, all right. Okay.
I have a...
That, that purchase order was issued during that timeframe, but it was to replenish the account for use for the rest of the fiscal year.
So I, I have a, this, I have a Pitney Bowes machine in my office. I do the same replenishment, but not nearly at these levels. So. All right, the other, the only other quick request that I have is I really like, and I had asked the former chancellor, when she was the vice chancellor of business services to do that, to do these in descending order of amounts. I just, for me, I'd like it to see it that way, highest to lowest dollar amount.
It's there. It's there.
We did it.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. February it is. Mm-hmm.
Not the one I have.
Exhibit B.
Oh, right, in the... On B it is, but exhibit A is...
Yes. B was good.
Got it, okay. All right. Good. Sounds good. All right. We have a motion, trustee Lang, a second from trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. All right, trustee Wright, 5.12. I'm...
We did it.
That's right, you did it, Terry. All right. So now, we're on to 5.2. So, these are the resolutions. I'm going to read a statement here, if I may. Item 5.2 recognizes formal resolutions given by the Board of Trustees to honor extraordinary achievements as well as those who provide honorable and lasting contributions to students, the community, or education. The honorees will accept their board resolution and will be recognized for their achievement at their respective college campus. Congratulations to our faculty of the year who exemplify the difference teachers make in students' lives. We recognize and deeply appreciate your commitment to your area of expertise and your dedication to the student, to the success of our students. We applaud our classified employees for the work they do to keep our colleges and district running smoothly. Our state legislature recognizes the significant contributions of classified school employees and named the third full week of May Classified School Employee Week. This year, Classified Employees Week will be celebrated May 20th through the 26th. And lastly, my great pleasure as, as board president to, to recognize student trustee Larson for his contributions to the board and his excellent leadership during his tenure. He has been an outstanding representative for our students, and it's been a real pleasure working with you, it says him, but you're here, with you, over the past year. In addition to the resolution, Jordan, we're going to honor you with a commemorative plaque. I really want to thank you for your dedicated service. You've added a lot to the board. Really thoughtful contributions throughout the year here, and we really wish you all the best, and please stay in touch, and you always have resources and, and references right here at the dais, when, whatever you do. So thank you very much. One more time. All right. So we're now on to our general action items. Oh, you're right, I apologize. So we need a motion to approve the resolutions. Motion trustee Lang, second from trustee Prendergast. Let's go ahead and vote. And as expected, approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. Thank you again, Jordan. All right, general action items. We're on to 6.1 Fiscal Year 2020-21 Five-Year Construction Plan. We have a motion to approve the item. I think I know why. A motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Lang. Any questions? Nope. All right. Let's go ahead and vote. Approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. I didn't see a pull on the list either. All right, 5.2 Saddleback College Access Control Project Design-Build Agreement, Soltech Pacific Corporation. We have a motion. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Lang. Any questions? I don't see any. Let's go ahead and vote. 6.2 is approved by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. All right, 6.3. The adopted resolution authorized the purchase of HP computer equipment utilizing the National Association of State Programmen officials under the Western State Contracting Alliance Cooperative Purchasing Program. A lot of cooperations and collaborations here. Do we have a motion to approve the item? Motion trustee Lang, second from trustee Whit. No questions? Or, yes? Maybe? Roll call vote? Okay. No, no, I don't mean, I, I mean not roll call, I mean electronic voting. That's what I meant. Someone hasn't voted. There we go. We have 70-year, seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.4 Several Board Policy Revisions. Do we have a motion to approve these board policy revisions? A motion from trustee Whit, second from trustee Jay. Thank you for adopting some, some suggestions that I made for the anti-nepotism policy. Appreciate that. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion is carried by seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.5. Additional Board Policy Revisions to Except for Review and Study. Previous item was for discussion and approval. So we have motion trustee Wright and a second from trustee Jay and a question from trustee Lang.
Realize that the, these items are coming to us for review and study, but just a quick comment on 3201, Exhibit F. And that was, we are, we seem to be changing this policy to, instead of the chancellor, name several other individuals. And the concern that, that I have about this is whether this is a good change or not. Obviously, the board's employee is the chancellor of the district, and so I would think that that would still be the correct person to supervise this matter on a, on a district level. So I'm just throwing that out there for additional consideration.
Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, so I'd like to know, what was the reason to change the capital construction policy from being supervised from, from the chancellor to the vice chancellor? What was the idea behind it?
What was the impetus?
This is the first reading, and we could ask questions now.
Right. So the reason behind it was just what we're doing. So the chancellor has really delegated it to the vice chancellor of business services, and it's the vice chancellor of business services that really is overseeing and, and looking at it. So that was the reason, but it's really up to the board. This is the board policy. We can easily change that back to the chancellor if that's what the board's more comfortable with.
Yes, you may.
If you notice in the first sentence, that hasn't changed. The chancellor is designee, his or her designee, will be responsible for the development. And then it goes into assigning, be supervised by the vice chancellor of business. So I don't think you've lost that control in the chancellor's office.
Good point.
The detail work is done by the vice chancellor.
Trustee Prendergast. All right. You okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, so we have a motion from trustee Wright, a second from trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.6 Academic Employee and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions. Do you, I see a question. You want to have the motion and the second first, or?
No, I prefer to speak...
All right, trustee Lang?
Before we do that. And again, I will ask that we divide the question to separate all of the canvas conversion stipends from the rest of the, the rest of these items.
So there is a motion to separate out the canvas items from the all other items in, under 6.6?
Yes. I think most of those are under B1 and 2.
There's a motion to divide the item.
Yes.
I'll second that, you know, to support him.
Well, it says you've moved it, Marcia.
Oh, okay, so I can't second his motion?
Well, you, you're, you're the, you're the...
I moved the item.
Oh, okay, before, so we need to recalibrate the, the electronic system.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just, I know he wants to divide it because he wants to vote differently, and I'm not saying I want to vote that way, but I'm seconding him so that we can approve the motion. Seconding that, the, his motion.
I'm sorry? But I, I don't have, my screen is frozen. Oh.
No, it says motion to divide.
So she's still the mover? Are we going to, all right. Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. This is on to divide it. Motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote, student trustee, bless you, yes vote. All right. So now, which portion are we going to vote on first? That's been divided. Well, we voted to divide it, now we need to vote on the divided...
Because we're dividing it, the canvas portion and all the rest of it.
Right, so...
So maybe we could vote it?
I would suggest you vote on the, the...
Yeah, I'm moving to vote on the balance.
The balance.
The non-canvas items. Right. So we have a motion to move on the items unrelated to the canvas compensation stipend.
President, before you vote?
Yes.
I have to do my task of the contracts. So to call your attention to Dr. Jim Bice's contract as interim president of Saddleback, he will be paid at step eight, range 27, annual salary at $259,344. The next contract is an interim chancellor contract for vice, for current vice chancellor Anne Marie Gabel. She will be paid for three mon, two months of service, $300,000 at a rate for the interim chancellor position, and she'll maintain her current associated transportation and cellphone stipends. The next and final one would be for Joanne Higdon, who will come on board to serve as the vice president, interim vice president of administrative services at Saddleback. And Joanne Higdon will pay an annual salary of $235,236, which is range 25, step eight. And she will also be provided additional stipends. I'm trying to find that quickly.
None.
Oh, none, sorry. No stipends. That, that, that ends my assessment.
Okay. All right. Did you want to speak again, trustee Lang?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
It says motion failed. Crashed the system.
This is on the, the divided motion. Okay? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote. Let's go ahead and vote next on the... Let's go ahead and vote next on the canvas stipend compensation. A motion from Marcia Milchker. And we need a second.
Need a second.
And we have a second from trustee Prendergast. Do you request to speak, trustee Lang?
No.
Oh, you're still showing as.
Somebody didn't erase me.
Okay, I'll erase you. I just erased you, gone. All right, let's go ahead and, any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries by 6 to 1 trustee yes vote and a student advisory no vote. All right, 6.7 Classified Personnel Actions, regular items. Motion from trustee Milchker and a second from trustee J. Seeing no questions, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by 7 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.8 Revised IVC Tenure Track Hiring Authorization.
I have one question.
Sure. You have a question to the administration?
Yeah, I just, I just wondered, I have a question.
You got it, wait. Not open for discussion yet.
Right. Well, I thought she was going to ask for an informational question to the administration. But, okay, we have a motion trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchker. And trustee Milchker has a question.
Yeah, it looked like IVC added two additional counseling positions on the, on their tenure track position. Is there funding to fund most of these positions, do you think?
These are both categorically funded, meaning they're specially funded positions, both.
Oh, the, the counseling positions are.
Both the guidance and counseling, the last two. Both of those are categorically funded.
Oh, I see, okay. So what is, is.
By Triple SP.
Yeah, I know the second one is EOPS, but what's the first one?
I will defer to President Rockmore.
Okay.
I may have to turn this on first. If I could refer to Dr. Linda Fontanella for exactly which department that is assigned to, but they are, they are both categorical.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Rockmore. It is a general counseling position that is being supported by Triple SP. We have one for EOPNS and one for general counseling.
Really? That's interesting. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, Dr. Fontanella, if you would just remain up there for a second, I would appreciate it. I, I'm just trying to understand what the need is for the additional counseling positions. You know, that is the number one position on the list and then also added the two at the bottom. So obviously, there's been circumstances that have created the need for significantly more counseling and wish you would just describe that a little bit.
Absolutely. For the last four years, we have felt that we have been underfunded in our counseling area. Our ratio of counselors to students is still slightly over 1,000 students per counselor. The state has a preference that the ratio be 400 to 1, but we are a long ways from getting there. So we did get some additional funding, an addendum to our Triple SP grant of $700,000. And with that, we had a conversation with the campus and the campus made this a priority for us.
And is this driven by the Student Success Initiative?
It is.
Okay.
And also by pathways.
Okay.
By guided pathways.
Just out of curiosity, what is the ratio at Saddleback? If anybody knows.
Juan, are you here?
Juan said it is comparable.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, you just don't want to leave my screen, oh, there you go. All right, we have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchker. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by 7 to 0 trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.9.
Board President, I need to pull that item. My apologies, there's an error on the list.
So we are pulling 6.9.
And we'll resubmit it in the, in the May agenda.
All right, very good. 6.9 is pulled. 6.10, and I think you, do you want to make a comment now, or?
Yes, I will make the comment. The, before the board is a contract, employment contract for the new chancellor who has been selected. The annual salary for this contract will be $350,000 with monthly allowance of 100 to cover telephone internet expenses and a monthly allowance of $165 related to cellular phone and $625 a month for transportation stipend. She will also be receiving a $10,000 relocation stipend. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We have a motion from trustee Milchker and we have a second from trustee Wright. Any questions or comments? Well, I just, I want, I want to say that I look forward to working with Dr. Burke, with Kathleen. She's going to start July 1st. And I think there'll be an announcement to the entire community going out within the next 12 hours or so, letting people know, so. What's that? Well, this is the time to comment. This is discussion. Should we hold in suspense? All right, we look forward to welcoming her to our campus. Let's go ahead and vote. It didn't jinx it. So it's, a contract is approved for Dr. Burke. Congratulations to her. By a 7 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. I think we're getting, we're getting a good person and, and I think it's a great opportunity for her as well. Let's move the district forward. All right, so we'll move on to reports. 7.1 Staff Response to Public Comments From the Previous Board Meeting. Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Guided Pathways Work Plan. 7.4 Facilities Plan Status Report. 7.5, okay, trustee Wright.
Again, I keep asking this question. I just wanted to know how we're coming with the ATAS building.
We are moving forward. We have finished our programming and we'll be providing a design-build program to the three firms, design-build entities, who have expressed an interest in providing us with proposals on this project. Recently, however, I should let you know, we have reviewed the schedule for the completion of the building and it has been extended out. So the work that.
Extended to what, what date?
August 2022.
2022?
Yes.
That's four years.
It's four years from now, it is.
Why, why, why the extension?
We are understanding now that the Division of the State Architect is, rather than taking a six to seven month timeframe to review those documents, it's taking more like 10 to 12 months. So there's one of the extensions. There was another, during the time that we were reviewing the programming on this project, it was about a four to five month timeframe that it took for us to make a final decision about what program would be included in that building. So take that four months and add it to that six, seven months, five, six months, then we're getting really close to that year. There were decisions that were made and discoveries that were made during the course of designing this project. One of which was, the building will need to be raised in the location that it will sit, which is on the tennis courts. That's below the street level and lower than we can connect to the utilities, the gravity-fed utilities. So we're going to need to raise that building. And the raising of that building will take approximately two months of timeframe to get that building higher than just at ground level. So when we add all that together, we've added another year to the project. I'm sorry to have to report that.
Okay. How's it look for the other, I was going to ask for getting state funding for the.
For the gateway?
For gateway and also for, I guess, the art, or fine arts.
If you don't mind, I'd like to defer that to, again, Vice Chancellor Gable, who's more connected with what's happening there.
Okay.
So the chancellor's office, at the latest update in March, they are recommending approval of both the Gateway Building and the Fine Arts Building at IVC for the 1920 state budget. That should be going to the Board of Governors either in the May or the June board agenda item, and then that would be submitted to the Department of Finance.
So it looks like 2022, before we get to buildings?
Oh, before we can actually move into the buildings? If we get, well, the way the state has been doing the funding, although it may change with a new governor, is they've only been funding the working drawings in one year and then the next year they do the preliminary plans and then the next year it would do construction. So the state has been dragging it out an additional year from what we're used to. We're hoping to get that change to where both the preliminary plans and working drawings would be approved in the 1920 fiscal year, which would get us going a little bit sooner. But yes, so if we're looking at 1920 for plans, 2021 for construction to start, then we're looking at probably a fall of '22. Or a little bit later, depending on DSA.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you.
Trustee Witt.
2022 for me is totally unacceptable. I just needed to say that so everybody could hear that. I really believe in options and I think we need to go back to the drawing board. And if the state is really drawing it out for 12 months, let's see if we can work with the state and draw it out for six months. I really believe that we have to do a better job. I mean, that entire program has been set here, 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 all the programs. And I feel, I feel it's unjust. I'm really taken back by it, I really am, Brandy. And I think there are options and I'd like to revisit this. Okay? In the next couple of months, I'll be glad to work with you.
Thank you, I'd be happy to talk with you more about it.
Thank you.
If I may respond, trustee Witt. One of the things that we're, we're starting to undertake is our educational master plan cycle. So we are going to be starting our educational master plan late fall, maybe early spring, and then later in the spring, about mid-spring, we'll be starting our facilities master plan. So it's my intent to work with both of the colleges to get and develop a fully detailed out facilities master plan with the calendars and the dates and the schedules of our building program. I would like to see where we have by fiscal year, how much money we're going to be spending in order to kind of upfront the BARK process. I think the way that we have been funding our, our buildings and our program with basic aid funds is fabulous that we have those, but we don't really start the planning for the most part until we've fully funded that project. So what I would like us to do is to do our facilities master plan, get everything planned out, working with the departments and the programming. And we would detail out by fiscal year how much cash we're going to need and that would be budgeted based upon our facilities master plan. And so we can start the design of buildings and projects in the fiscal year that we've slated for that to begin, knowing that in future years, the construction money is going to come because we've already laid out our cash flow analysis for our entire facilities plan. So that's kind of the goal of where we're looking to go, which I think will help speed up some of our planning and some of our construction. And we'll start seeing a little bit better uptick in what we have coming online in any given year.
I appreciate what you said, Vice Chancellor, but being that you weren't here a year ago or a year and a half, a year or two years ago, I really feel that in my conversations with your office, this isn't what we expected. And I'm, I'm really surprised and blown out of the water tonight because in my conversations with your predecessor, this isn't, this was not the plan that it would be in 2022. And so that's why I'm reacting the way it is. So what you just said is, makes sense, but we need a plan. But the plan that was formally adopted, what I thought was adopted, isn't coming about. So I'm really asking to look at options and to change this 2022.
Okay. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, one, one thing that you said that I agreed with is that we really need to have an educational master plan on both colleges, soon followed by a facilities master plan. And we need to follow that master plan. And, you know, that's why if we had a facilities master plan, we would have some idea of where to put the ATAS building rather than just kind of move it on top of the tennis courts. You know, what I would like to say is if the tennis courts aren't a good location because we have to build up the land because of the, they're below earth, below the earth, you know? They're lower, lower in the ground than, than, than we need to have to build a, a safe building that won't be sinking into the ground like the old ATAS building did. We need to, perhaps, if that's not a good site, consider other sites. That's what I'm thinking. And you are right, plan a little better to make sure that we get funding from the state, you know, as, as we are getting funding hopefully from the state for some of, one building at Saddleback and one at Irvine Valley. But I, I think, is it, is there still time to look into whether this is really a good site for the new ATAS building, for the new site for the ATAS building?
So I would say that we've had those discussions at length, even in the short timeframe that I've been here. And I know the ATAS building in, in particular, has gone through many iterations and has changed. The, the programming that has been done, has been done with the Saddleback campus constituents. And what we're bringing forward and what we're planning on going out to bid on, actually that the RFP is slated to go out onto the street on May 4th, so just next week, for this particular project. And it does include additional square footage for advanced manufacturing. So there has been a scope change, there's been additional square footage that have been added to the building. We've had lengthy discussions on the location. The most recent discussions relate to the existing TAS building and whether or not we want to keep that. That decision has not been made yet because we are going to have further discussions with the college to determine what the need of the existing building may or may not be. At this point in time, it is the recommendation of the college campus, as well as my recommendation, that we continue to move forward as planned on the ATAS building so that we can get the RFP out on the street. If we change anything right now, we're going to delay it even longer. So if we can get the RFP out on the street on May 4th like planned, then we would be bringing a recommendation to award the bid at the August board meeting.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on. 7.5 Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.6 Quarterly Investment Report. 7.7 Quarterly Financial Status Report. I noticed the equities are not doing so, so well these days. So, doesn't just impact us. 7.8 Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. 7.9 Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. And 7.10 Basic Aid Report. Okay, moving on. 8.0 Reports From Administration and Governance Groups. We'll start out with the Saddleback College Academic Senate, Blake Stevens.
And now, good evening. No report.
Wow, perfect. All right.
He didn't mean it like that.
Well, yes, I did. No, I'm just kidding. Blake knows I like him a lot. Faculty Association, Mark Blethett.
Just a couple of quick items. I'm sure we've all seen recently, a lot of attention being paid in the media to the concept and the issue of equal pay for equal work. Their focus has primarily been on the disparity between salaries between women and men, with women being the, the underrepresented group in that. California Community Colleges and our two colleges in particular also have an underrepresented group and that's our part-time faculty. They earn at a fraction of the rate of full-time faculty. They earn at a fraction of the rate of full-time faculty, and yet, they have the same training, they provide the same education, the same, teach the same courses, provide the same services to our students, um, for a fraction of the cost. Um, and I hope like, uh, trustee Wright, most of you had the chance to read, um, the board report that I submitted on behalf of the Faculty Association, which highlighted a, a, a sampling of the testimonials and, uh, of the part-time faculty, uh, concerning their, their hardships and concerns, um, that they have to face on a daily basis because of that, that pay discrepancy. And, um, I hope that, uh, you'll consider those stories when the opportunities arise to minimize that discrepancy and really truly achieve parity for our part-time faculty for what they provide, because they are a vital class of employees for our district. And the last thing I'd like to finish with is, I would like to, uh, personally thank, uh, Chancellor Fallow for the service he's provided to our district, uh, his leadership, and, uh, the stability that he has provided during his time here, has come at a critical time, and I think it'll have a lasting effect, so I thank him very much, and I wish him all the best.
All right, very good, thank you very much. IVC Academic Senate.
No report.
All right, thank you for that. Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
I would like to thank Thomas M. Fallow. Certainly, um, his leadership has been critical for someone like me who has been brand-new to the district, I felt like he and I kind of made our way together, um, because I was such a new administrator here at this district. So thank you for your leadership, I'm a better administrator for it, and my advice is that if you ever grow weary of jogging, to take up the thriving sport of pickleball.
All right. Vice Chancellor of Business Services and in four hours, Acting Chancellor, Anne Maria Gabel.
Thank you. Um, I too would like to send my thanks to, uh, Thomas Fallow, one, for, uh, recruiting me and asking me to apply, this is a fantastic district, and, uh, I am proud to be here and thankful that, um, I did come here. Um, I would also like to thank the board for them putting their confidence in me to serve as the interim chancellor for the two months. Um, I look forward to serving both the district and the colleges, working closely with the colleges, and participating in all the end-of-the-year activities, and I also look forward to welcoming and helping to transition our new chancellor, Dr. Burke. The, on my vice chancellor business services side, I will, uh, inform the board that we have concluded the BARK process on the campus. Uh, I wanted to get that recommendation to interim chancellor Fallow today, before I was recommending to myself, so, uh, that memo did go to chancellor Fallow, and it will come to the board as an action item at the May meeting, so look forward to the BARK recommendations, uh, for that. And lastly, we are working towards trying to identify some ground lease tenants for the ATAS building, so that has been a, a major focus, and we continue to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and even though it's short-term, congratulations on, uh, becoming acting chancellor tomorrow.
Congratulations.
Uh, we'll turn to IVC Classified Senate.
No report.
No report, a lot of no reports, very good. CSEA President.
Thank you, Mr. President, just, uh, wanted, one item that, uh, CSA is now in negotiations with the South Orange County Community College District. We want to thank Dr. Visca Chell and her team for setting a very good positive tone, uh, with, um, our chapter, so we look forward to very fruitful and positive, um, discussions, uh, in negotiations, and we're looking forward to a really good conclusion for a new collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, and last but not least, Saddleback College Classified Senate.
I only have, uh, one item on my report, uh, Saddleback College Classified Senate, uh, can, or concluded our elections of our executive board, um, so in June, I will be introducing a new Classified Senate President.
We will miss you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, tonight we adjourn our meeting in memory of Terry Thorpe, who passed away at the age of 72 on April 14th. Terry was a founding faculty member at Irvine Valley College and was a professor of business science. He retired from Irvine Valley College in 2010 after 31 years of dedicated, dedicated service. Terry was the president of the Academic Senate in the 1980s and was known for his great smile and love for teaching and for his students. He was a veteran of the US Army and enjoyed volunteering his time to tutor student veterans. For 44 years, he was the loving husband to his wife Linda, and he leaves behind two greatly loved dogs, Dakota and Cody. Our thoughts and prayers are with Terry's family, friends, and former colleagues. He will be greatly missed. Thank you, everyone, and good night.